Okay, it's four o'clock and we'll call this July 2nd meeting of the planning, Salina Planning Commission to order. Daisy, can you tell me if the Kansas Open Meeting Act has been met by posting?
Yes, I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
Thank you. Dean, roll call.
We'll go ahead and call rule. Commissioner Seidau?
Here.
Commissioner Van Covern?
Here.
Commissioner Alt?
Here.
Commissioner Farber?
Here.
Commissioner Padgett?
She has joined us via Zoom.
So we have Commissioner Padgett via Zoom. Commissioner Waters?
Here.
Chair Mike Sell?
Here.
So with Commissioner Padgett joining via Zoom, we have a full membership of eight. And having provided notice of today's meeting, we can move ahead with today's agenda.
Very good. Okay, item number two, approval of the minutes. Have you all had a chance to read the minutes and any corrections? And if not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move we approve the minutes of the June 4th meeting.
Second.
June 18th.
Sorry, June 18th, sorry.
Moving to second, approve the minutes of June 18th as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard. Mush and carries. Dean, new business.
New business under public hearing items. And we have a public hearing today scheduled on three applications that have been filed on behalf of the Salina Airport Authority. And those three applications involve annexation, a change in zoning district classification, and a proposed preliminary plat. And the location of the applications associated with this public hearing item is the southwest corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road. And depending on whether we measure to the center of the road or to the edge of the property, it's between 77 and 80 acres. At that, it's half of a quarter section. So the first application, item 3.1A, is a request to annex this property into the city limits of the city. And so we have indicated that this is currently in Saline County. It is currently zoned agricultural. And it's located in the northeast quarter of Section 10, Township, 15 South Range, 3 West in Saline County. And so this property was purchased by the Airport Authority back in 1986. It has remained outside the city limits in Saline County since that time and has been zoned for agricultural use. This application has been filed requesting the annexation of the property. And it is contiguous with the existing city limits on the north. And their request for annexation relates to a request to provide full municipal services for a proposed warehouse facility and other industrial uses that would be part of a subdivision located on this property. So to have a point of reference, we have Salina Vortex located to the north on the north side of Waterwell Road. And farther north of it is the remainder of the Airport Industrial Center subdivision. You have Centennial Road on the east. And there's property that's owned by the Douglas F. Bradley Trust that's on the east side of that Centennial Road. And you have farmland to the south and to the west. And just as a point of reference, the property directly to the north that shows inside the city limits, that property was brought into the city in 1988. So one of the reasons, and the primary reason for annexation being considered in this case is that the city's annexation policy is that it will not extend city utilities to development that's outside the city limits and not allow connection to the city's utility system unless the connecting property is annexed into the city. And so there is an existing water line that's underneath Waterwell Road that runs out to the Burma Tower near the city's landfill. This line was installed by the military to serve Camp Phillips, but is now owned and maintained by the city as part of our water system. And this provides a source of water supply for this property. And so as to Waterwell Road itself, the dividing line runs down the center of the road. And the north half is inside the city limits and the south half is outside the city limits. And so this request would include the south half of Waterwell Road, bringing the entire roadway into the city. And so this request has been filed because the Airport Authority would like to utilize a connection to the city's utility system and have full municipal services for a industrial subdivision they're proposing to develop. It would be very similar in character to the subdivision that's on the north side of Waterwell Road. And they have submitted requests to zone and plat this area as well. And so their plan is to start in the northwest corner and work back to the east. And so they're proposing a large lot in that northwest corner for an industrial project. And so this is a voluntary request. And since the property is contiguous with the city, there is no action by the county commission that is required. And so we provided information about this water line. It actually ties back to the city's south water treatment plant that's at the corner of Waterwell in South Ohio, runs from there west down Waterwell Road. But as you can see on Mr. Hurd's drawing, when he zooms back in, there are three north-south water lines. I think you have to go one zoom farther, Dustin, to see it. So there's three water lines that serve the area to the north. There's a 12-inch line here, 12-inch line here, and a 12-inch line in Centennial Road. And so those additional points of connection will allow for this property to have a looped water supply with more than one source of fire flow. And then as far as sewer service, there's an existing manhole that's located right at the southwest corner of Vortex Avenue and Centennial Road. And the Airport Authority's design engineer and the city's director of utilities have confirmed that this subdivision can be served by a gravity connection to that existing sewer line. So as we look at the abutting road system, you have Waterwell Road, which was resurfaced in 2013 and does meet the city's interim standard as to pavement width and thickness. But as we've discussed with some of these other fringe roadways, it does not have curb and gutter and does not have sidewalks. And Centennial Road is a dirt road that doesn't even meet the city's, or the county's, minimum standards and has sometimes been closed due to mud conditions. So it's what they would consider to be a minimum maintenance road. As far as we look at other utilities, this is in the Evergy Service Center. There is natural gas distribution lines in the vicinity. And this is not part of any rural water district, so we're not dealing with any franchise issues or service area boundary issues. And then if we look at the overall storm drainage, this particular property is high at the northwest and drains in slopes towards the southeast. And so runoff from this area, the goal would be to get it back over to the east, over to west Dry Creek in some fashion. And we have police protection being provided to the area directly to the north. It's Salina Vortex. And fire protection that comes from Station 3 on Belmont. And this property is contiguous to areas that are already receiving city police and fire protection. The area to the west is not included. That farmland is not part of this request. And it's not really anticipated that that would develop anytime in the near future. The Douglas F. Bradley property, he owns two parcels. On the east side of Centennial Road, there's 280 acres that extends south from Waterwell. And then there's acreage at the northeast corner of Waterwell and Centennial. That's also owned by the Douglas Bradley Trust. That property on the northeast corner is more likely to develop sometime in the near future than the property south of Waterwell. And so if we look at the costs and benefits of annexation, the city would have long-term maintenance costs associated with maintaining new public streets and public utility lines extended into the annexation area. But potential benefits would be additional city property taxes levied against the property, additional sales tax, and franchise taxes. If we look at our comprehensive plan, this is shown as dating back to 2010 as a potential annexation area for the city. And it's designated as future employment area, which means it's anticipated that it would expect to be developed for industrial uses. And so we're in the city's primary service area. Public utilities have been extended adjacent to the site. And so annexation of this property, from staff's perspective, would be consistent with the city's policies for annexation in the comprehensive plan. Dustin did put up a map there that just shows the status of Waterwell Road. And we have been contacted by the county who's interested in perhaps eliminating the gap in ownership and maintenance. And so that, there's no right-of-way for Waterwell Road at that location. So we would need to be working with Mr. Bradley as far as annexing that piece in. But that is not part of today's action. And that would be a separate follow-up item for the city commission to consider if the Saline County makes a formal request that the city annex that property. But you could see from a practical maintenance, law enforcement standpoint, knowing which jurisdiction you're in while you're driving on Waterwell Road is an important consideration. So we have identified that that does in fact create a gap. But that is not part of the Airport Authority's application or today's action. But we do recognize that that gap is there. So again, this property is well-suited for annexation. There's no service or territorial issues dealing with utilities. And it meets our policies in the comprehensive plan for candidates for annexation. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about the annexation process or the annexation of this property. And so I'll defer to the chair whether you would like to have us report on all three of these items and then take action at the end, or make recommendations on each of the items separately.
I prefer that method. I'll...
Prefer which method?
Just talking about all of them at the same time and then coming back with separate actions at the end.
Okay. So I'll just see if there's any specific questions about the annexation piece before I go on to the zoning. Because in each case, we're talking about the same piece of property, just a different aspect of it.
Yep. We're okay with that?
So if there's nothing specific about the annexation request, the zoning request is item 3.1B. And that is for the same piece of property, again bordered by Waterwell Road on the north and Centennial Road on the east. The request is to annex the entire parcel and zone it I-3, heavy industrial. And that request is consistent with 160 acres directly to the north. And I-3 is our most intensive zoning district. And we'll let the representatives of the Airport Authority speak to that and a little more specifics. But our experience with the I-3 zoning to the north is that generally the uses that go in there have to be approved by the Airport Authority Board. There are often conditions in leases or conditions in deed covenants that dictate how that property develops. And usually, the plans for development of those properties have to be approved by the Airport Authority Board. So that serves as a supplement to the city's zoning authority. Again, as I said, the property on the north side of the street was zoned for industrial use in 1988. This property was purchased in 1986, about the same time. And it was purchased to serve as a potential expansion area for the industrial park on the north side. And so as we noted, there is interest from industrial prospects that can't be accommodated on the north side of Waterwell Road. And so the request is to zone this property I to I-3. And that would accommodate development of warehouses, distribution centers, and other industrial uses. So we have provided you some information on page two about trucking and distribution-oriented uses. We have different definitions within our code. But often, there's a lot of truck traffic and activity and loading and offloading activities. All of those uses are considered to be industrial uses and would be permitted in the I-3 district. Truck terminals, of which Old Dominion is an example, generate more traffic than a typical warehouse because they have fleets of trucks and sometimes smaller breakdown of loads. But in each case, those types of distribution and trucking uses do involve semi-truck traffic. And this property is well situated in relation to the I-135 Waterwell Road interchange. And so we have indicated that the I-3 district is designed for those industries which are apt to have an extensive impact on the surrounding area. And they do allow some uses that aren't allowed in any other district. But those are sometimes identified as conditional uses. So uses like salvage yards or explosives, manufacturing, and storage, those would be conditional uses that would have to be approved separately. So approving I-3 zoning would not allow those types of uses as part of today's action. We noted parking requirements for these types of uses and the fact that the I-3 district does not require paved parking. But I think if you'll look at the industrial park on the north side of Waterwell Road, all of those developments have paved parking. And the reason for that is not the zoning. The reason for that is requirements that the Airport Authority puts on their tenants. And so again, the work of the Airport Authority supplements our zoning code when it comes to the development standards. So the primary distinction is that I-3 does not require front yard landscaping. It does not require paved parking and access aisles. But we have had paved parking and landscaping at a number of the projects out in the Airport Industrial Center on the north side of the street. So as we noted, this is gently rolling farmland. It slopes from northwest to southeast. It's not in the floodplain. It's not inside the designated airport runway clear zone. And so based on its characteristics, its location, and its proximity to city utilities, we do think it's suitable for industrial development. We've discussed the I-3 zoning. And this would just be a logical extension of the mirror image on the other side of the street. We've addressed public utilities and services, which are available in Waterwell Road and serve the area across the street to the north. And the comprehensive plan and its employment designation would support the I-3 zoning, which is consistent with the long-range plan for this area. And so with that, I would see if the commission had any specific questions about the I-3 zoning being requested.
Any commissions on the, I mean, on the rezone? Commissioner Padgett, do you have any questions for staff regarding this rezoning?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Okay.
Then the item 3.1C deals with a proposed preliminary plat for this area. And again, it covers the exact same area. And Mr. Hurd has the plat layout on the screen. The only variation or waiver of the subdivision requirements that's being requested is for what's labeled there as Swanson Drive, which extends as a dead-end cul-de-sac street to the west of Scanlon. And that dead-end segment measures at 900 feet. And in the subdivision regulations, the maximum length of a dead-end street that's allowed is 600 feet unless it's approved as a variation by the Planning Commission. So that's the only variation that we have identified with this request. And so as we noted, the Airport Authority has an industrial prospect that's interested in the property in the northwest corner of this area, which identified as Lot 1, Block 1 on the plan. They've submitted a preliminary plat for the whole area. And it shows the area being divided into three industrial building lots. And initially, access would be from Waterwell Road. But there's two internal streets that are shown, Scanlon Avenue extending south, and then Swanson Drive that runs parallel to Waterwell Road. And so as we've discussed before on these fringe developments, Waterwell Road and Centennial Road will either need to be improved as part of development of this subdivision, or a development agreement would need to be approved for Waterwell Road in order to meet the applicable public street standard for this area. Centennial Road improvements will be addressed through a future benefit district because initially, as we indicated, from a phasing standpoint, this would develop from west to east with the property adjacent to Centennial developing last. And so the only real question that we have from a plating standpoint that we feel needs to be clarified is that the layout, it's a couple layouts and preliminary things we've seen before, would imply that Swanson Drive would be extended over to connect to Centennial Road. And it's unclear from this drawing whether Swanson Drive is intended to eventually be extended to the east to connect to Centennial Road. If that were the case, then you would not have a single large lot there because you would have a lot to the north and a lot to the south that would be bisected by that street. So we do feel like we need some clarification whether that L shape that we see is how it's going to be, or whether it's anticipated. There's certainly going to be utilities extended in that corridor. But we need a clarification of whether that would be a future street as well. And so as far as the street names, Scanlon Avenue is just a continuation of an existing Airport Industrial Center street name to the north. Swanson Drive as a street name does not conflict with any existing street name in the city or county. And so we have three lots, a lot up in the corner, the northwest corner, a lot in the southwest corner, and then essentially a lot 34 acres that covers the east half. And so again, we would note that if Swanson Drive is extended over to Centennial, then that's going to result in having four lots with one lot on each side of that street. But all of the lots that are proposed meet the lot widths, lot depths, and areas requirements for the I-3 zoning district. And it does not look to us like we have any land lots or lots that can't be served by utilities. And/or that would be unbuildable. And so we'll get back to the perimeter street analysis in a little bit. But we've discussed the drainage and the utilities. But to be more specific about the utilities, if you could go to that other drawing, Dustin, the infrastructure plan. So the plan is to bring, start at this waterline connection here, bring a looped line down and bring it back up and tie it back to the 12-inch line in Centennial. And that will create a looped waterline system that'll have sources other than just the Waterwell Road line. And then the plan is to start a sewer line here, run it this direction and up, and tie it into the manhole at the Vortex Avenue intersection. And so those plans would be, essentially have to be done upfront in order to make the northwest lot developable. Because the only way to get sewer to serve this northwest lot is to start it here and bring it all the way back. It can't really be done in phases. And so all internal water lines will be public lines located within public utility easements. And that would apply to the sewer lines as well. And so the Airport Authority will be responsible for design and construction of both water and sewer lines. And they, as we noted, will all be public lines and all have to be designed to meet the standards and specifications of the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. As far as the drainage, this is, they have proposed what they're calling an interim solution. And then we'll eventually reach a long-term solution. But right now, in the plat, they're showing two interim detention ponds, one in the northeast corner and one in the southeast corner. And the term interim would imply that those would be temporary and located in temporary easements until there's a permanent detention pond, either serving the entire subdivision or permanent solutions for lots as they develop. Again, we've covered the fire protection and police response, which already occurs at Salina Vortex across the street. And there are no issues with gas or electricity. And so the, I think if we summarize the street access and improvements, Waterwell Road does not meet the interim street standard or the city street standard. It does have the required pavement thickness. And it does meet the width requirement of 24 feet. But it doesn't have curb and gutter and has no public sidewalks on either side. So Waterwell Road would either need to be upgraded to city street standards with curb and gutter as part of the development of this subdivision. Or the Airport Authority has the option of requesting a development agreement to be approved that would allow this development to move forward with those improvements being deferred to a future time. So that would allow Waterwell Road to remain in its current condition pending future improvement action. And then the timing of improvements to Centennial Road... And then the timing of improvements to Centennial Road will be addressed as part of a benefit district that the Airport Authority is proposing to form to finance the street and utility improvements to serve this subdivision. So as we understand it, the water and sewer improvements, Scanlon Avenue and Swanson Drive will be constructed as part of the development of Phase 1, with the question of the east leg still being, needing to be resolved. And so, this plat will result in dedication of right-of-way for the south half of Waterwell Road, dedication of right-of-way for Scanlon Avenue and Swanson Drive, dedication of internal public utility easements and drainage easements. And then, the interim detention ponds will be located in temporary easements, and we would request that the applicant's design engineers clarify whether these are intended to be ponds that would serve the entire development, or whether ponds designed to serve individual building sites. And so, I think on page six, we've kind of summarized what the public improvements would be. So we've got construction of Scanlon Avenue, Swanson Drive, and Centennial Road to full city standards. The timing on Centennial Road's going to depend on phasing and will likely be deferred out into the future. We believe, based on previous discussions, that the Airport Authority is going to request a development agreement to allow defer, deferral of improvements on Waterwell Road. There would be sidewalks constructed on the internal streets, and if the development agreement is done for Waterwell, then that would defer construction of sidewalks on Waterwell. There will be design and construction of detention pond areas, and then there'll be design and construction of internal water mains and public sanitary sewer lines. And so, on page seven, we've kind of highlighted again the, what we've identified as Phase 1 improvements and Phase 2 improvements. And the Phase 2 improvements would be design and construction of Centennial Road and a possible extension of Swanson Drive to the east. And so, I think that addresses those questions. We did want to note that the Airport Authority has submitted a request for special assessment financing for those improvements, and those are under review by the city's special assessment review team, and will sync up with their items that will go before the City Commission on the 22nd of July. And so, we have provided some possible findings for relating to the preliminary plat on page eight and nine of the report. And our recommendation would be for approval of the plat, subject to the conditions identified on page 10 of the staff report. And that action would include approval of the 600-foot length variation for Swanson Drive. And so, I think from staff's review of this, our primary two questions are, one, is Swanson Drive intended to extend on to the east to Centennial Road? And then, secondly, are the detention ponds shown on the plan designed to accommodate runoff from all of the subdivision in a single detention area? Or is the plan that, which is the case on the north side, which is that individual development sites have their own detention facilities? So that covers items 3.1, A, B, and C. And I'll pause for any questions commissioners might have before we hear from the applicant.
Okay. Anything regarding the plat?
Yeah, I have a question, Dean. On the, you said 600 feet is the dead-end max? And for the, yeah. So for Swanson and Scallion, is that, what's that distance all the way through there? Not just for the one, but for the Scallion and Swanson? Wouldn't that be considered a full dead-end street?
It would if Scanlon Avenue is not extended to the east. And so, that, that becomes an important thing. We'll have to have one of our, we'll have to have Dustin do some measuring for that. But our, our 900-foot measurement is measured from here to there as, as a dead-end street, and that's based on, for us, we're interpreting this as a street that's going to extend on to there, which makes the dead-end section here. You are correct that if this never is intended to be built, then the dead-end is not 900 feet. It's, it's this, and I will have to get a measurement from Mr. Hers from the plat or reading it off the plat as far as the distance from Waterwell to Swanson.
Okay. I was thinking like fire safety, if the other, if Scallion gets blocked somehow, there's no way for them to get back all the way to Swanson.
Yeah. Part of the, part of the reason for Swanson, Dustin, if you want to zoom out a second, part of the reason for Swanson is that for the use that's proposed here, we also want to have a second means of access in, besides Waterwell Road. And so, this also provides frontage and access to this piece here as, as a second route in and second route out. And so, that's, that's the other purpose that Swanson serves. But that is one of the reasons why staff's primary question is whether Scanlon is intended to extend to the east, because that, extending it to the east makes Scanlon not a dead-end.
Right. We'll get some clarification on that from the applicant when we get to that stage.
So it appears that Scanlon Avenue coming south from Waterwell Road down to Swanson is a little over 620 feet. So it would, it would add the length of that total street or that, that dead-end cul-de-sac by about 620 feet. So it'd take us to, for about 900 to about 1,500 square, or lineal feet.
Any other questions of staff?
Is that, is that cul-de-sac compatible with the turning radius for our fire department?
The design will have 100-foot right-of-way and a 90-foot turning radius within it, which is, that is what's in our subdivision regulations at, at the request of the fire department that accommodates their, their biggest turning radius that they have.
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Paget, any questions of staff regarding this plat?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Could we hear from the applicant? Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Peter Miller and, from the Salina Airport Authority. And as of today, actually, I'm the executive director of the Salina Airport Authority, first, first official day on the job. So thank you for allowing me to, to answer a couple of these questions. I can go real quick here. Yes, Swanson Avenue will extend to the east as part of Phase 2 when it is time, time to do that. I brought a couple of my staff members here that can also talk a little bit more about the details of, of some of the different options. The, the extension of Swanson to the east is dependent on our ability to get a drainage easement, drainage easement across the, the property to the east of us. Once that's, once that's established, then we'll be able to move from the interim drainage to the more permanent drainage. And again, I'll let, I'll let Tyler Glisman from Wilson and Company talk a little bit more about the, the specifics of the, of the drainage. But yes, Swanson will expand to the east.
So the primary entrance to that northwest lot would be off of Waterwell, is that correct?
That, yes. That is, that is the, the preliminary design that, that our potential future tenant has supplied us shows the primary entrance off Waterwell.
We have seen some preliminary designs, but if you look at the lot in the northwest corner, it has frontage on Waterwell, frontage on Scanlon, and frontage on Swanson. So it has potentially access to three different streets, depending on how they want to set it up.
Sure.
What is the purpose for having the cul-de-sac 900 feet down that property instead of 600? What is the reason for extending that further?
So the, the, the potential tenant that we're working with, their, their site plan, the size of the facility that they want to, to put in there, along with the amount of traffic, both employee and delivery vehicles, the warehousing side of it, they need that much room in order to, to separate the, the traffic.
Dean, did I misunderstand when you were saying, when we were talking earlier, that the Scanlon or Swanson Road would need to be done so that way all like the water looping and stuff can be done at the same time? Or it can be done in phases, or it's?
What we're, what we've identified as Phase 2 is construction of Swanson to the east and any improvements to Centennial Road. But what's going to be built up front as part of Phase 1 is they're going to build Scanlon, they're going to build the west leg of Swanson, and they're going to make the waterline loop from the northwest corner to, down Swanson and over to the northeast corner. And the green line there is sewer, and that all has to be done up front because the plan is to develop this property from northwest to the east, and you have to have that loop, and you have to have the sewer extended all the way to the west edge of Swanson there for the user of Lot 1, Block 1. So that's the, the upfront investments.
Right. So just the utilities need to be set up, not the actual full Swanson Road needs to be set up?
No. Swanson, Swanson Drive, the west leg that you see on that drawing, that's going to be built in Phase 1.
Right.
But the east leg that connects back to Centennial, they don't want to connect it, and the city doesn't want to see it connected to a dirt road that's impassable. So it, it's going to be tied to whatever timing justifies the improvement of Centennial. There's not, there's not a reason to, to develop those until we have development in the northeast corner that needs that access.
Does that clarify, Commissioner Roger? Go ahead.
If I may, Tyler Glisman, Wilson and Company, 1700 East Iron.
Thank you.
On the detention pond is, we're working on an easement with the property to the east. So with the timeframe for the development in that northwest quadrant, we had to phase what we're doing so that we could get the infrastructure in so that they could get their plans moving forward. So that's why it's being phased. So with the detention, it is going to be a regional detention. They will, that other development will have some detention because it's a, just to control the drainage, its drainage isn't always easy to control. So until the easement is in place, while we're working on that, we're creating an interim detention pond in the northeast quadrant where some of the water goes to. So that water will be released at the existing rates that it are today because we'll detain it. Then as we get the easements done, then we can build the permanent detention pond as we finish Swanson Drive going over to Centennial Road, and then we can work with Centennial Road. So that all requires easements and right-of-way from another landowner.
So are you envisioning the, the permanent solution being one large?
One regional detention pond that is managed and controlled by the Salina Airport Authority, just like they have with their other regional detention ponds as well.
Yeah.
And then with the cul-de-sac, part of that development on the bottom is those maybe five-acre lots in the future. And so, that's why that cul-de-sac is pushed over, as if that ends up five-acre lots, then you can service that lot. And the roundabout, if I remember right, is actually exceeds the city's minimum standard, if I remember right? And we've done auto-turn on it to make sure single, or you know, the single axle trucks can get around that, so.
The minimum standard in the subdivision regulations is a 100-foot diameter for the right-of-way and a 90-foot pavement, a 45-foot turning radius. But there are some in the airport area to the north that are 120-foot right-of-way radiuses, which allows for a bigger, bigger turnaround. But the, the point that they're making is that if somebody came in and said, "I want this five acres in the corner," if Scan, if Swanson stopped right here and somebody, they wanted to have the flexibility to have five acres in this corner, they wouldn't be able to get street access to it. So the, the, the purpose of the length is to provide rear access for the use here, but also to allow this property there to have its own access if it developed independently. And then Dustin, if you could go back to the aerial photo real quick. I think Mr. Glisman could show us what he's, if you could zoom out just one. So you can see on this photo, there's kind of a historical channel here that runs across the Bradley property. But what Mr. Glisman's referring to is acquiring a drainage easement that would allow the discharge from this property to go across here, because what they're doing with their interim pond is they'll release it up here and it'll kind of migrate down Waterwell Road. But the ideal solution would be to take it directly over to Water, south of Waterwell Road, and that would require working with Mr. Bradley.
I think we're all clear on that. Thank you. Any questions, further questions of the applicant? And regarding any, any of these phases, the annexation or the plat or the zoning?
When do you think Phase 2 would be engaged?
Well, so originally, we were thinking the next three to five, but the way things seem to be going in this town, we could probably see it in three to five months. I mean, I, we don't have any prospects right now for, for Phase 2, but.
Dean, how complicated will it be when you get to Phase 2 and you want to upgrade Centennial Road?
Well, what, they're, they're going to have to design that, and the, the benefit district that will finance that will be set up up front. So it would be similar to the situation we have today where Holmes Road, there is a benefit district for Holmes Road. Holmes Road is just a gravel road, but we have a benefit district in place. And so, when that residential development pushes east to a point where there's a physical street connection to Holmes Road, that's going to trigger the improvement of Holmes Road. But the benefit district, the cost allocations, and the design is already there, it's just a matter of building it. So what we would envision here is that the Airport Authority's design engineers will design the improvements to Centennial Road. The city commission will create a benefit district that would share the assessments between the Airport Authority and the Bradley property to the east. And then, that benefit district and the cost allocations being in place, whenever development is ready to go, that requires that connection, then the plans would be there, the financing plan would be there, and it would just be a matter of, of building it. But the, the plan is to, to get the financing mechanism and the benefit district boundary and everything set up up front. So then, we would control the timing.
Benefit district would take 51% of the landowners?
Benefit district under the, a change to the statute allows a provision that's, that allows the benefit district to be created, and then the city carries the cost until such time as the property owner on the other side hooks up or benefits from it. So in the case of Holmes Road, where you are likely to have development on the So in the case of Holmes Road, where you are likely to have development on the west but not the east, when Holmes Road is built, the city's gonna be carrying the cost for the east half of Holmes Road. In this case, the city would be carrying the cost for the west half of Centennial Road, and then if the Bradley property develops, then they would, they would pay their share at that time. But it allows the benefit district to be formed in advance so everybody knows what the share and the cost estimate is.
Is staff okay approving this plan with Phase Two not being, uh, completed?
Well, it's not, it's not unusual at all for our residential subdivisions to be done in, in phases. Um, so, um, I think Magnolia Hills Estates, east of Markley Road, was done in five phases. The Stone Lake, which is out at Ohio and, and, uh, north of Schilling Road, that, that was done in four phases. And so it's not unusual for infra, we're gonna plat the whole thing, we're gonna zone the whole thing, we're gonna annex the whole thing, it's just the infrastructure, primarily the street improvements, that will be put in in phases. And so you're, you're being informed of the phasing plan, but you're being asked to, to annex, to consider annexation, zoning, and plating of the entire, uh, 80 acres.
It, I'd also like to point out too, our, our design plans include both phases, the, the improvements to, uh, to Centennial, and well, as well as, uh, the new Centennial when it gets to that point at some point in the future, will, um, align with the Centennial work that's going on north of Waterwell Road right now. So it'll straighten up the intersection.
Mr., Mr. Miller, you've seen the seven conditions that the staff has recommended?
Yes.
And you're okay with those seven conditions?
Yes.
Good. Uh, any questions of the applicant regarding the annexation? And I presume you're on board with that? And, um, anything regarding the zoning? I think we're, I think we're good.
Did we describe, correctly describe the Airport Authority's process of reviewing and approving the plans for the prospects and tenants that go in?
Yes, very much. All, all of those different developments go in front of the, uh, the Airport Authority Board for approval.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone from the public care to address this application or in any, any of the three parts of this application? And do we have anybody online?
We do not have anyone online that appears to be interested in speaking on this topic.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner Paget, did you have any questions of the applicant?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
So just, just to clarify, that they have indicated that, that Swanson is a through street from Scanlon over to Centennial, and so based on that, the way we would measure the dead-end portion of Swanson would start, um, at the corner of Scanlon. And so the, the length of the dead-end portion of Swanson's would be 900 feet as we described and not, not 1,520 feet, including the length of Scanlon.
Thank you.
Well, that would be a, a dead-end street until Phase Two, correct?
It would be...
Or the total would be?
In the interim, it would be a dead-end street.
Right, yes. Of 1,520.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
Do we, if we want to make a motion, can we approve all three, do one at a time?
What we'll do, one at a time, we'll do the...
Yeah, we should make a recommendation on the annexation and vote, a recommendation on the zoning and vote, and an action on the plat with the, the street length variation and the conditions so that, um, it should be three, three motions.
Yep. So the first one would be, the annexation would be A24-2.
I move we approve 3.1A for the annexation.
Been moved, uh, moved to approve application A24-2 for the annexation of this property into the city. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And Commissioner Paget is also an aye?
Yes, sir.
All those opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion on, uh, application Z24-3, which would be the, which would be the...
This would change it from agricultural to I3 to the industrial.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think this fits the future land use and everything like that, so I don't see any issues with it at all, so.
Is that a motion?
I would make a motion to approve application Z24-3.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve application Z24-3 for the I3 zoning, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And Commissioner Paget as well, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Okay. We're down to the, uh, application P24-2.
Mr. Page. Sorry. Before we vote on that, I have a question. Um, are we okay with the, the interim distance of that street being 1,520 until the full Swanson Drive is met or made?
I have the same concern, and that was, that was where my question was going as well.
It, it, we've addressed this before, and I don't know a timeline specifically for this application, but I think it's one of those things that the applicant has indicated that the primary access to the first lot that'll be sold is off, will be off of Waterwell Road. So the, um, the function of this piece, as I, as I understand, will be primarily a, uh, an emergency type, um, thing until Scanlon gets completed.
So what you're saying is there's probably no, not gonna be any app, no tenants in the pack lot, but that, by that time, then the other street will have been made already?
Yeah. Well, that's a, there's two, I mean, there's two options there. One is to, again, we have, we have, again, with, with Salina's phasing of developments, we have temporary dead-end streets that on paper are looped to connect, but when you develop in phases, you're gonna have streets that are temporarily dead-end until the loop is, is completed. The, the options are to, to, um, approve the request for the 900-foot dead-end length as shown, or the other option would be to add an additional condition that says that the, the lot in the southwest corner can't develop until Swanson is connected to Centennial. But, um, that, I, it's certainly access, and we're, we have the advantage that you don't have of having seen the conceptual site plan for the northwest corner, but I counted on their site plan five access points into that property. So it's, it's, it's certainly not going to have limited access because there's, there's five different access points where vehicles can get into the property in the northwest corner when you count the, the driveways on the, on the three street frontages. As this is proposed, the only way to get access to the southwest corner is via Scanlon and Swanson Drive. Although it would be private and not public, there's, there's going to be driveways on Waterwell that connect all the way through the property to Swanson, but those aren't, those aren't necessarily public. But if that, if that is a matter of concern, then the way to address that would be to condition approval of this phasing on the southwest corner not being allowed to develop until the Swanson connection to Centennial is made.
Okay. I don't want to make it more complicated than it needs to be, as long as fire access can get over to that other area, even if it's...
Yeah. I mean, part of the reason, again, for Swanson being built in Phase One is to provide multiple ways in and out for that northwest lot. So there, there will be physical connections from Waterwell Road to Swanson Drive in addition to Scanlon.
Okay.
I move we approve application P...
That's not a question on that.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Still on that same topic of that cul-de-sac, what was the purpose or what is the purpose of city code, uh, having a max distance of 600 feet for cul-de-sac?
To limit the total number of houses served by a dead-end street.
So this one would not, that would not apply to this? So is there precedent that...
It, it applies across the board, but it, I mean, if, Dustin, do you want to go over and look at Yoast Drive? I mean, on the aerial photo? And it, it's much more common in an industrial or commercial setting, but, uh, um, I didn't know if you had the aerial photo already opened. I mean... Got it. So I, I don't have, I don't have the exact length, but it's, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of, of 2,000 feet. That Yoast Drive is a dead-end street, and so it is, um, that was, that was approved as a, a variation by the Planning Commission. The, could we, have we, no. There's never been a text amendment that differentiated commercial and industrial development from residential. The, the purpose of this dead-end street length is that most of our subdivisions are residential, and it deals with housing and the number of houses on a dead-end street. It is more common for, um, industrial and commercial subdivisions to have street lengths that exceed 600 feet, and it's, it's more just that there's a conscious recognition that the Planning Commission is recommending a segment of street that's longer than 600 feet, and in this case is industrial and not residential. But the, the policy reason behind the 600 feet was to limit the number of homes that were served by any one dead-end street.
All right. Commissioner Waters, did you?
Sorry, Carla, you can proceed now.
I move we approve application P24-2 with the seven conditions listed on page 10 and 11 of the staff report.
In a second?
Second.
And a motion in a second to approve application P24-2, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And Commissioner Paget, was that an aye from you as well?
That's an aye.
Okay. And we had none opposed, so the motion carries.
So for the benefit of the applicant, the, and the benefit of the Planning Commission, Planning Commission is the approver or disapprover of plats. So the preliminary plat is that action is final on the question of annexation and zoning. Those are recommendations to the City Commission, so those two items will go forward to the City Commission on the 22nd of July, along with the Airport Authority's request to utilize special assessment financing for their public improvements.
And Mr. Miller, congratulations on your new appointment and your first day on the job getting a motion approved, so.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Next item, Dean.
Item 3.2 is a, uh, special use permit application that's been filed by Salina Farmers Market Association, and I'm gonna let Mr. Hirsch present that to you.
Thank you, Dean, and Commission. So special use permits require a public hearing with the Planning Commission and approval of a plan in which their either roadside stand or farmers market is going to operate. And in this particular case, we have the Salina Farmers Market Association Incorporated. And in 2007, this Salina Farmers Market came before the Planning Commission with a farmers market, open air market at Waters at 460 South Ohio, and they have operated at that location since 2007. However, due to new ownership, there's been a change, and the new owners did not wish to renew the market at that location, and so staff has been working with the market leaders on coming up with other new locations. And Central Mall and Mr. Retley with the Salina Farmers Market Association have come to an agreement to have the location of the farmers market now be the parking lot at the, what I would call the southeast corner of the Central Mall property. So in the southeast corner of their parking lot, there's a large kind of void parking lot area, and the farmers market is proposing to renew and transition their operations at this location. And so the proposed market would be very similar to what has previously operated at the Waters True Value. They are looking at 15 vendors, and it's going to be designed in a way in which farmers and producers can pull up with their trucks, back into a stall, set up a, a table and a tent, you know, for shade on, on days that shade is needed. And they would do that in two rows with pedestrian walking aisle in between the different vendors. And then parking for customers taking place in the parking area around the vending area. The operation is proposed to take place on Wednesdays and Saturday mornings from 7:30 to 12:00 PM from June 15th all the way through the end of October. And the operators would be Mr. Retley and, and the association, the Farmers Market Association. They would control the, the trash and debris, they would pick it up at the end of each, uh, market. Sanitation and utilities would be provided by the Central Mall. However, because the Central Mall does not open until 10:00 AM, they also will have a porta potty on-site for, uh, people that, that need that before the mall is open. Security would be handled by the management team of the market as well as 911 emergency services if that becomes necessary. Amplified sound and music is not anticipated. There may be some vendors who would require refrigeration or freezers and, and have generators, but that would be the extent of the noise that's foreseen for the market. Parking, the Central Mall has a, a surplus and ample amount of surplus parking in this area, so surrounding the market is, is where the market foresees customers parking their vehicles, and staff does not see that there's any issue with, uh, any, uh, shortage of parking available for customers. For cleanup and taking care of things, the market would patrol the site, pick up trash, and at the end of every, uh, market, they would clean up. For fire safety and emergency medical, 911 would be the primary, uh, service provider for that. However, there is an urgent care clinic that's not far from the market for other types of minor emergencies and medical attention requirements. So in this case, there is ample parking. The operator has been operating a successful farmers market for over 20-some years at a different location, and is familiar with, uh, the operation of outside markets in Salina. Staff does have a number of alternative options available to you. One is you could approve the special use permit application for the proposed open air market. Farmers market upon finding that the requirements for special use permits have been made with any special conditions that you deem appropriate. Number two, you could postpone consideration if you believe additional information is needed. Three, you could deny the special use permit application if the required findings of fact cannot be made, and you feel this location is not appropriate for the proposed special use permit. Staff has some findings that we've listed on page five, and we would recommend that the commission approve the farmers market with three conditions, with the first being that the open market shall be limited to the areas shown on the aerial photo with the customers using the surplus parking surrounding the farmers market, and that the farmers market and associated activities shall not spill out into the adjacent driving aisles for safety purposes. Number two... Number two is that the site shall be cleaned up and restored to its original condition following the conclusion of each outdoor market, both Wednesdays and Saturdays. And number three, the special use permit may be revoked if the applicant is ever found to be in violation of the city codes or the conditions of the special use permit. And as with all special use permits, if you were to approve this permit, it could be renewed annually administratively through a temporary use permit. And so what happens is, once a special use permit is approved by the Planning Commission, as long as all the conditions are met each year, the applicant can then come to staff with an administrative permit for a temporary use permit, and we could renew that administratively on an annual basis. And so with that, staff would take any questions that you might have about the market, and we do have representatives from Central Mall as well as the Farmers Market Association to answer any questions.
Dustin, can you zoom out?
I can go to an aerial photo if that's helpful.
Yeah, I was trying to gauge the space in the corner. So it's not directly in the corner, it's actually up near the old J.C. Penney's.
Yeah, it's going to be near the southeast corner of the J.C. Penney's area, but there's a sea of parking in that area that rarely gets used, and I think that's one of the reasons that the mall and the farmers market decided this would be the best location, because it's outside of the major travel ways, so there's not a lot of traffic in the area, not a lot of parking being used in the area. However, it's still kind of up front and visible along Magnolia on those Wednesday and Saturday mornings.
And will it have physical barriers outlining it while it's in use?
We will let the applicant speak to their designs for their operation on how they would set up boundaries for the market.
Commissioner Waters?
Okay. Dustin, once in a while, there's a carnival there. Will that be in conflict potentially with this?
We do have a representative from Central Mall on their plans on if there would be any carnivals during this time period, so he can speak to that.
Thank you.
Any further questions, the staff? The applicant is ready to address this.
Steve Owens, 1100 Sunrise here in Salina, thank you, thank you for listening to this. But to answer your question on the carnival, at this time, the carnival plans on coming back around Memorial Day weekend every year, and as we have spoke with the farmers market, during that timeframe, they will not be allowed to have the farmers market due to the carnival. Now, of course, the carnival will have to get the permission from the city as well as they have the last two years, so. But at this point, that is the plan with the carnival, they anticipate coming back every year.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Paget had a question regarding the outline or the marking of the space.
Sure, and that's where we will work with the farmers market and make sure that it's outlined accordingly. If you guys recommend we need to do it a certain way, I'm sure that Dave and his staff who've been doing this many years, they will definitely make sure it's done properly and safely.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Paget?
I believe so, thanks.
Porta potties, are those going to be left up the entire time of the farmers market?
Sorry?
The porta potties, are those going to be left up the entire time of the farmers market? I assume they're not going to be moved.
I'm Dave Retley with the Farmers Market Association. I've already spoke to the porta potty people, and they'll rent them by the month, and that's our intention. They'll clean them weekly, and we rent them by the month.
Okay, but they're going to be left at the site for the entire duration?
At the site the entire time.
Okay. Dean, I think that brings to the point number two, I think on the city, the downtown one, was added that the porta potties may be left at the site.
They were allowed to remain at the site for the full season.
Right. Was that noted on condition two of the, I think we added it last time on the downtown one.
Mr. Hirsch wrote the report, so I'm going to defer to him and what he said about it.
Sure. What I can do is I can go to the conditions of approval that we had for that other farmers market there downtown and look that up.
And if I may, even though we stated that Central Mall doesn't open until 10:00 a.m., on Wednesday mornings, we have our doors open by 7:30, 7:45, and even on Saturday mornings, the majority of the Saturdays, the AMC entrance is open by 8:00, 8:30. So even though the mall doesn't open until 10, but then the mall walkers enjoy to come out, and most of the time, we have those doors open Monday through Friday by 7:30, 7:45, on Saturdays, 8:30 to 9:00 o'clock.
Dave, I think you were trying to make a point.
We had a porta potty at this Salina Farmers Market from 1998 to 2007 while we were downtown, and we never had any incidents with it at all.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions of the applicant? Commissioner Paget?
Yes, I have one more question as far as, I might have missed this during Dean's presentation, but will there be tents or just tailgate as far as the vendors?
In terms of tents, what has typically been used by the farmers market is like a 10-by-10 pop-up tent. Those particular tents don't require any special permits or approvals to use, and they're usually pretty lightweight and small, so if you have a big wind event, the wind usually collapses them, and they don't really take off too bad, but that's what has historically been used by the market.
We also can use umbrellas. The umbrellas or tents are required by the state to cover food products.
Very good.
Okay, so we may not have a uniform look, it could be either tents or not.
Well, I think what Mr. Retley is saying is that the, there are time periods when you don't need a tent necessarily for shade or to block the sunlight necessarily, but to cover food product for safety purposes with birds in the area and whatnot. Is that correct? Is that, yeah. So a lot of times, we'll have the 10-by-10 pop-ups, tents to put over the produce, like over a table or over a truck trailer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to pull up the conditions of approval for downtown, and one of them was that Salina Downtown, Inc. is responsible for the maintenance of porta potties on the site from May through October, so we could have a similar condition in this case for the porta potties, if that's helpful.
That's a good point, and I think it's fitting.
And on six, we also had that the site shall be cleaned up and restored to its original condition following the conclusion of the farmers market, except for porta potties which may remain on-site if secured for the duration of the seasonal outdoor market. So those two would both kind of tie in with the operation in the porta potties.
And Dave, you're okay if we add that in there?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, do we have anyone online, Dustin?
We do not appear to have anyone online from the public.
And would anybody from the public like to address this? Okay, all right. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I'm happy you guys have collaborated on this, and I think it's good for the farmers market to be back here in Salina for us. And with that, I would move approval of this special use permit for application SUP-24-2 with the three qualifications listed on page six in our report, as well as adding the two conditions referencing the porta potties that were on the other permit. Is that good enough to put in the motion?
Yeah, I think we can get there.
Okay.
I second that.
With the other permit being the downtown farmers market.
The downtown farmer, correct.
We have a motion in a second to approve application SUP-24-2 for a outdoor farmers market. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
And that was an aye from Commissioner Paget as well? And none being opposed, motion carries. Go forth and mark it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Lastly, application CU-24-4, Dean.
Our final public hearing item tonight is application number CU-24-4, and that is a conditional use permit application to allow an electronic cigarette establishment, tobacco shop in a building located in the C4 Central Business District. And we have provided you in the report, starting on page two, just a background of how this particular use has been legislatively addressed in terms of the zoning requirements and the review process for the Planning Commission. And again, the purpose of the conditional use permit process is to allow notice to neighboring property owners and an opportunity to be heard, but also the difference between a conditional use permit and a permitted use is that in a conditional use permit, it's allowed on a conditional basis and is approved subject to enforceable conditions, which would not necessarily apply to a permitted use. And so whenever there's a change of occupancy, be it a commercial building outside the Central Business District or inside the Central Business District on page three of your report, it notes that, from the zoning ordinance, that no structure shall be used for any purpose, and no use of any land or structure shall be changed to any other use unless an occupancy certificate shall first have been obtained from the office of the zoning administrator certifying that the proposed use or occupancy complies with all the provisions of this chapter. And so the two uses where state law steps in is if you want to open a car dealership or if you want to open a drinking establishment, the state will not issue you a license unless the zoning administrator for the city of Salina signs off on the zoning for that use. And in some cases, for a drinking establishment, that requires a conditional use permit to be approved by the Planning Commission. That's usually not the case with a car dealership. In the case of a vape shop or tobacco shop, there is a state license involved, but that state license process does not involve the same zoning certificate requirement, which makes that a little bit different. But in citywide and in the C4 district, a conditional use permit must be approved before a tenant space can be occupied by a vape or tobacco shop unless you had a use like Pac Rat Smokes on Broadway that was in place before the 2014 ordinance went into effect. But in this case, we're dealing with a shop that opened in 2023 without applying for obtaining a conditional use permit. And so on page four, and carrying over to five, is just a timeline of city staff's involvement in this, and the primary concern in dealing with that timeline is that in 2014, the city commission and planning commission determined that hookah lounges being defined as a lounge where the hookah product is actually smoked or consumed was not consistent with the city's indoor smoking ordinance, and therefore is a use that's not allowed anywhere within the city limits. And so the concern in this particular case in terms of the enforcement and the timeline of enforcement dealt with the fact of reports received by city staff that this was being operated as a hookah lounge where the products available on the premises were being consumed or smoked on the premises. And so that has been addressed, but what was not addressed was the fact that even to have a retail shop where those products are made available to customers to take them home and use in their own residences, that still requires a conditional use permit. And so in fairness to the current owner, this lease was entered into under previous ownership. The current owner inherited the lease and this tenant when he bought the building. The applicant, in this case, premier hookah, is leasing a 14-foot by 50-foot tenant space located in this building on the north side of East Iron. And because the business there opened without obtaining zoning approval, we're at a point where the business needs to apply for and receive a conditional use permit in order to continue to operate. So this application has been filed, it's been reviewed, it's been advertised for a hearing at today's date. And so we have a tenant space where the front door and the front window faces Iron Avenue. It's adjacent to an event space, and we have the Bennington State Bank on the east. There's a tax preparation business and a tattoo and piercing shop to the west, and then you have Dagny's Ice Cream further to the west. And so we've indicated that the findings that need to be made in order to approve a conditional use permit and summarize those on page five and six. And your role in conducting a hearing is to evaluate the proposed use of the property and determine whether a shop in this location would be compatible with surrounding uses. And again, this process allows you to receive public input and also to establish appropriate conditions of approval. And so this building and this property conforms with all the C4 development standards, which allows for 100% lock coverage, allows zero setbacks, does not require off-street parking. And then we get to the question of welfare and convenience of the public. The applicant has indicated that this shop contributes to the welfare and convenience of the public because the north end does not have hookah equipment and accessories available, and that the products are tobacco and nicotine-free and can help smokers on their journey to quit. And so as we've discussed before, the health benefits or health risks associated with vaping is really a legislative question for the state legislature and through other legislative means, and not really pertinent to the suitability of this location for a retail shop. And so even if you don't think it's in the, this would contribute to public welfare, you could still conclude that this contributes to the public convenience. In terms of the impact on the value or impacts on neighboring properties, the applicant says he will only use the property for the operation of a retail space for the sale of hookah products and equipment and nicotine and tobacco products. It will have a safe, secure environment, will train all staff members to check IDs and verify the legal age. There's no empirical data or studies that show that vape shops approved in Salina to date have had a negative or depressing effect on property values or occupancy rates. It's still a matter of perception, and if we're concerned about spacing or over-concentration, there's ways to address that legislatively through separation or spacing requirements and not necessarily through the conditional use permit review process. And so this is going to be conducted completely inside the building. It's not going to prevent or impact development or use of neighboring property. There's no changes to the building that have been made or proposed. And so the question is, would this use so change the character of the building and surrounding area that it would no longer be compatible with its surroundings? As to parking, there's public parking available. As to utilities and drainage, it's an existing storefront space, so it's not going to have any impact, and there's no driveways or entryways associated with this. And so your options associated with this application And so your options associated with this application, we've highlighted on page nine of your report. You can approve the application for Premier Hookah as submitted. You could approve it subject to specified conditions or revisions to the plan for operating the establishment. Or you could postpone consideration of the application if you think additional information is needed from the applicant to reach a decision. Or you could deny the application if the required findings cannot be made or if you believe this use would cause injury to surrounding property. And so while it's not ideal to have these types of businesses open without being reviewed and approved in advance, from staff's perspective, having an approved conditional use permit is actually, from a regulatory standpoint, more advantageous than not having one because the conditions that are set aside in a conditional use permit are enforceable, allows us to access the premises and to enforce these conditions. And the thing about a conditional use permit is that it's potentially revocable if the conditions are violated or not met. So from an enforcement standpoint, we think it's more advantageous to have a conditional use permit in place than not, which is why we worked hard to get this application in front of you. And so we have outlined a number of conditions on page nine and 10 of the report that are fairly standard for the other vape and tobacco shops that have been approved within the city. And those deal with minors not being permitted in the premises, being closed for certain hours. In this case, two that are unique are obtaining a sign permit for the exterior signage that was put up at the front. And also, this has a condition that says no portion of the building shall operate or serve as a hookah lounge pursuant to section 1728 of the Salina Code as well as ordinance And again, those are enforceable conditions that if there's any violations that could result in suspension or revocation of the conditional use permit. And so we have provided attached to your report a set of condition or a set of findings of fact that relate to approval of this request. And then we have with that countervailing findings of fact supporting denial. And so one thing that we would note in terms of the denial portion is that if you find as a body that this would not contribute to or promote the welfare convenience of the public, we would work with you to try to articulate those reasons if you believe that this would cause substantial injury to other value, the value of other property in this neighborhood. We would try to work with you to articulate those out. And so if you would choose that route, we would work with you to try to incorporate those findings into your motion. While we agree that it's less than ideal, that the business has been open this long without coming before this body, we still think that it's preferable to have a conditional use permit that's enforceable in place than the other position. And so that's why we don't have any great concerns about taking action on a conditional use permit at this stage. So with that, most of us, our staff has worked with this location and are familiar with this, so we'd be open to any questions that you have. But the primary concern early on was that the establishment was being used as a hookah lounge where hookah was being smoked on the premises and that was considered to be a violation of the indoor smoking ordinance and the ordinance that was adopted in 2014. So with that, we'd be open to any questions. We just want to clarify that the sale of tobacco products, vaping products and hookah products, the retail sale of those products is legal in the state of Kansas and in the city of Salina. It is just the use of hookah pipes or consumption of hookah in an indoor public setting that's not allowed under our indoor smoking ordinance. So with that, staff would be open to any questions commissioners have.
I've got it. It says window lettering shall not exceed 33% of the front window area. It would appear that that signage violates that situation. So would that come under them getting a approval from downtown design review board? Or am I looking at that wrong?
No, you are looking at that correctly. The signage that's there was not permitted through a sign permit or through approval of the downtown design review board as most of the other downtown signage. And there is a, there's a tattoo shop just up the way and they had a similar restriction on that. And part of the reason for the 33% is so that passersby, including city personnel, can see into the front of the establishment and see what's taking place in the front portion. And we can't do that if 100% of the window is blocked. So those two are related. And so if those conditions were adopted, then we would work to get that front modified so that there is a viewable window there. And so that's part of the reason for that restriction.
Thank you.
Are there any other downtown entities that would have, that this would have gone before? I guess for like consideration or anything like that?
The, what we, you see in that picture right there, covering the entire window under our sign code, that requires application for an approval of a sign permit. And if you put up a new sign on a business downtown, that sign has to be reviewed by the downtown design review board before the sign permit is issued. And since there was no sign permit applied for, this did not go before the design review board. But the usual course of things would be you are proposing to occupy a tenant space, you have a plan to put up signage for that, that goes before the design review board. This did not do that.
But as far as, I think to answer your question, Commissioner Rogers, as far as the conditional use permit aspect goes, the planning commission is the body that would hear that. So you guys would be the first and only body that would hear the conditional use permit aspect of that, if that helps.
Yeah.
Yeah, the design review board is not looking at the use. They're only looking at the exterior of the facade and the signage.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions of staff?
What's the timeline on getting that signed into compliance?
Well, we'd have to just continue to work with the applicant on that. From our perspective, the applicant also owns and operates the Annie Rita Restaurant that's downtown on Santa Fe. And that particular establishment has gotten sign permits and downtown design review board approval for its signs, but for some reason, not at this location. That could have something to do with the previous owner not being concerned with that. But we would work with the owner to get those modifications made once action is taken on this request.
Thank you, Dean.
Okay. Any further questions of staff? Could we hear from the applicant, please? Your name and address for the record?
Cavell Gordon, 119 East Iron Avenue. What questions would you like me to answer?
So I have a question. There's a layout of the space, whatever. What is the art room?
So what I have back there is pretty much, I have video games. Do you name the video game? I have everyone, I think with the exception of like an Atari. I have art that's back there. If you want to just come out, just literally just play video games and just look at art, that's what I have back there right now.
I have a question. Unless I'm reading things wrong, it appears that it took a while for you to realize what you needed to, what process you needed to get through to, what caused that?
It was my ignorance. I honestly didn't know. And then when I found out, I, it was my misunderstanding of everything and that's what kind of delayed everything.
Okay. Thank you.
And so products aren't consumed on premise? So in the back of the art room, it's just a lounge area?
Correct. There's no, nothing consumed there at all.
Thank you.
Can you tell me how you police the age requirement?
So, I mean, it's a small location, so it's kind of easy for me to make sure I check the IDs with everything, everyone that comes in and out of there. No one can purchase anything. It's kind of the same thing like with my restaurant. You can't purchase any kind of alcohol without me checking your ID, make sure that everything is legit and legal, I guess.
And have you seen the staff recommendations? There are 12 recommendations.
I did not.
Can we get a copy of those for?
So, yeah.
Packet there.
Okay.
Just go ahead and give them a shortcut.
Seven there and then.
Five in the back. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, perfectly fine with it, yeah.
Mr. Gordon, I know there are a lot of other vape shops here in town. Are there other retail places for hookah equipment?
Not in town.
Are you the only one?
I'm the only one, yeah.
I hadn't seen one, I just.
Yeah, that's why.
I figured you would know better than any of them.
Yeah, that's part of the reason why I did it. You know, it was, I had a lot of my friends that, like, I've never smoked anything in my life, you know, but a lot of my friends, that's what they do. At home, they're like, hey, we like to do hookahs, stuff like that. And I was like, well, I know a guy who's a retail out of Wichita and he has, basically he has three or four warehouses and he owns a few hookah lounges in Wichita. So he just become, he just became my distributor. So I was able to get everything at a wholesale price and was able to figure it out that way.
And you've had this open for how long now? This establishment, about a year?
About a year.
And is hookah a popular product here in town?
For product wise, yeah. I get a, I get a lot of people, you know, I initially, you know, I was, I was a little reluctant behind it to doing it. And then the feedback that I got from it was, was kind of overwhelming and I was, I was definitely excited about it. I, you know, people come in, just get the hookahs because there's so many different variations of hookahs and so it's, it's worked. A lot of people actually come in and purchase a hookah for their, you know, personal use.
I, it's probably not a relevant question to this application, but can you give me a rough idea of how many dollars in sales that is for you a year?
I can sell one hookah, maybe six, $700.
Is that right?
Yeah. So, so.
I had no idea.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, some of them stand about two, three feet tall, some of them, you know, just you can put on your nightstand. So some of them you can actually put in a cup holder in your car. It just all depends on the size and style that you're wanting. So, yeah. So and then with that, it's a lot of accessories that go with a hookah, you know, from like the charcoals to the tobacco, to the foil, to the tongs, to the tips that go on them and the hoses, the brushes. So, I mean, essentially, I can take one hookah that's $30 and when you get everything to go with it, it's easily $400, $500. So.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Christmas is coming.
Yeah, yeah, Christmas is coming.
Okay, any further questions of the applicant regarding this application?
I have just a couple. And one of the questions was about the signage.
Okay.
Are you.
I can get that.
Willing to get down to the 33%?
Well, what it was is the person who did all my signage, he worked for Gleason's and Son and like Sign Pro. So he was like, yeah, we got a new design and I can put it up there because you can see through the entire thing. It's just, it was mainly for the sunlight blocking everything out, but if you walk up to it, you can see everything, even if the light's on or off, it doesn't, you really can't even tell that it's on the window.
So if that's the case, is the, what Dean said as far as seeing inside, is that an issue still?
Is that a question for me?
We'd have to test, we'd have to test that out. I'll ask Mr. Roberts what his observation is.
So I was over there earlier this week and I did think it was relatively dark.
Yeah.
Looking through it, yeah. But I'm talking like being able to see into the shop with the signage. So I think as far as the signage would go, through the sign permitting process, through the certificate compatibility process, we would look at the visibility of that and more than likely, I mean, if it's a condition, we would stick to the 33% sign coverage. So. But my observation was it was relatively hard to see in. I don't know what it's like to see out of it because I didn't go inside.
We can over there right now if you want. I can check it out.
I can tell you from a design standpoint, they make perforated vinyl in different visibilities. So let's say for buses on a side window of a bus, you would probably use one that has very small holes and lets very little light in and allows a big printable area. So the bigger the holes get, more light goes in and the printable area becomes harder to see. But anyway, but as far as I know, most places that are, as far as permitting goes, consider that as still part of the signage. So your 33% would be your 33% whether it's solid vinyl or perforated vinyl.
Yeah, and I don't, the example I have is we worked with the tattoo shop to the west of this and they've got letters painted into the window, but otherwise the window is open and viewable and so they don't have film over their main window or anything. So we would, we would move more towards that, that model. But that's, that's the idea is so that the passerby can see in without having to be completely obscured.
Well, again, if this were approved, that would be one of the conditions and you're okay with that, is that right?
Yeah.
Yep. Very good. Any further questions of the applicant?
The art room, is that, I don't know, for patrons only or is it for people to come and just kind of hang out and play video games too?
Yeah, anyone can come, as long as you're 21 and older, you can come in, play video games. I didn't want to risk having anyone younger there just because of the, you know, the tobacco and, you know, all the other things that, you know, from the retail aspect of it, I didn't want to risk it just in case someone comes in. If they're not 21, I just nip it in the bud right then and there.
And you sell vape equipment too there as well too, right?
Correct.
What, I mean, what's to say they would buy something, go to the art room and there's every now and then, you know, it's really easy just to.
Yeah, not happening. Yeah, I have cameras set up throughout the entire thing. My staff is already, they already know, you know, once, once you buy it, you know, you can either leave it behind the counter before you go into the art room or you just take it out to your vehicle or you're not able to go back there.
Yeah. Is it sealed or anything in like a bag or like?
No, well, I.
A plastic bag goes in there?
Yeah, in a plastic bag because inside the, I guess like each vape, they're already inside of a sealed bag, a small like, I don't even know what to call it, but it's like an sealed bag that's already inside the box. So as soon as they open that, they open that bag, then I tell them to leave.
You mentioned age 21. So are you letting, is your age limit 18 or 21 or?
It's 21.
Okay, so the eight, the 18, you're not. Okay, so the 18, you're not letting people in?
No.
If they're, if they're under 21, you're not letting anybody in?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant?
So, in the regard to the age, staff would note that on the condition, I don't have the condition in front of me, but on condition number one, when it says 18, we would change that to 21. In regard to Mr. Gordon's comment about, you know, people coming in, being 21 or older. So, that would be a change that you'd want to note in your motion. But staff, I'd like to bring that up.
From the time that these local laws were first passed, the zoning laws, the state went in and changed the definition of a minor from age 18 to age 21. So, that's a type of graphical error in condition number one, and should read, "Minors under the age of 21 shall not be permitted to enter the premises," because the state did change the law defining a minor.
Very good.
And is the majority of your sales hookah, or is it vape, or at this point?
Right now, it's hookah, honestly, because I have a bigger, just from an inventory standpoint, my inventory is based off of the hookas, the tobacco and stuff like that. The vapes, I have the vapes just because, like I said, there's, there's no other vape shop past Crawford. So, then, we're like, so I only have a few in there. I don't have, like, if, I cannot compete with the other vape shops at all when it comes to vapes. But I just have like, you know, just a small, small amount in there.
And I understand hookah and vape are vastly different materials and everything. That's, it's no secret to this board how I feel about the welfare of, the health effects of vapes and different things like that. But I completely understand hookah and vape are separate entities, too.
Very good. And was that, any further questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. And do we have anybody online, Dustin?
We do not have anyone from the public online right now.
And it appears that we have no one in the audience. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and action.
I would move that we approve application CU 24-4, conditional use permit, with the 12 conditions listed on page nine and 10, and the correction on the minor age from 18 to 21.
I second.
Commissioner Paget was the second, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve application CU 24-4 with the 12 staff recommendations and the change from 18 to 21 on the age on number one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Commissioner Farber? And so, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Legislative matters, Dean?
Don't have any legislative matters to discuss with you this afternoon. And no preliminary discussion items or administrative items not requiring a hearing. In terms of other business, our next scheduled meeting is July the 16th. We have no scheduled agenda items for that meeting, so we're, I think we're telling you now that that meeting is canceled.
Okay.
Unless you want to have a special meeting and discuss something special, but otherwise, we'll consider it canceled. And then, we do have items that have been filed for the first meeting in August, which is scheduled for August 6th. So, if you have vacation plans or anything carrying into that month, and you want to let Daisy know that you may not be available for August 6th, that would be helpful. The other thing, and we don't have a complete record at this point, but August is the time when terms expire. And if you're, the, you members who are eligible for a second term, if they've completed their first, and if you are interested in having your term extended, you can submit an updated expression of interest form to the clerk's office. Obviously, if your term expires in 2025 or 2026, it's not relevant now. But if your term, as you understand it, would expire in 2024, and you're eligible for another term, if you submit an updated expression of interest, then you can be reappointed for a second three-year term.
Can you send us an email with that?
Yeah, I think we can get an email out to you that has everybody's terms on it and get that to you, so you have a chance to do that. I think, from what I understood, that the city commission was looking at doing that perhaps on August the 12th. And so, we will get that reminder out, and if you need help with an expression of interest, we'll do that. But we'll send something out to each member that shows you when your term expires, so you can check that for yourself.
That'd be great. Okay. Public forum, do we have anybody online, Dustin?
We do not have anyone from the public online.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy and safe Independence Day. Go ahead.
I just, when is the, I want to talk to maybe about putting something in place for like vape shops and stuff like that with a distance restriction or something like that?
Yeah, that would be considered a preliminary discussion item. We can, we can bring something back to you for what other communities are doing, if that's something that you want to look at.
Yeah, I would.
One of the things that we pointed out in our background report, when we initially were working with the planning commission, they were interested in having a separation requirement between vape shops and things like schools, churches, places like that, and having that written into the code. And then, that, that got eliminated when it was passed into an ordinance. So, when you are, just to help us put information together, are you speaking in terms of separation of those shops from other uses, or are you thinking in terms of separation of those shops from each other?
I would say separation from each other, as well as like schools and anywhere where children mainly would be, schools, daycare.
Because I know we have an example of communities that have a separation requirement from the, between the establishments themselves.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a start also, and maybe.
I'd be interested in that information as well.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that together as a preliminary discussion item for your August 6th agenda.
Yeah, good. As well as maybe like a larger notice area.
Okay.
When that is issued, so.
Yeah, right now, the only ones that we have a variation for is for, and we haven't done one for a number of years, but if you were constructing a new cell tower, or if you are adding amplified sound area at an outdoor area at a bar, our notification area is 500 feet. But the statutory, the standard notice area for, like the case we just heard, is 200 feet.
Yeah.
So, we can provide some information about that as well.
Great. Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
And a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.